...the regular meeting of the Monday Village Board for July ninth, two thousand and fourteen. If you will write some pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Holston.
Present.
Trustee Horn is absent. Trustee Pop.
Here.
And Raisik.
Present.
By the way, would you also trusty horn, make sure you give him a brief about his fake British accent? He texted me a couple times and I couldn't detect it. Um, indication, Mr. Batista, do we have someone? Letter E, open to the public, agenda items only. If you can come forward and look at your comments in three minutes. Okay. Next we have under consent agenda. I'll entertain motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
I'm not that wish.
Sorry.
I would like to remove, um, item one, minutes from the regular board meeting of six twenty-five.
Okay. Anything else? We can do that in fast if you need to, just help to work in the board meeting.
Sorry, I got that set correct.
That's fine. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes with, or the agenda except for item one.
So, that covers everything you wanted?
So.
Move.
Second. Holston and Gray, okay. Yes, is it?
That's right.
Okay. Roll call.
So, the first motion is just dead?
I didn't call for a vote, but.
So, we approve everything except the minutes?
So, the first motion where this pop and Raisik initially made a motion for the.
It was a motion and a second, and then.
So technically, we have to take a vote on that. So, let's go back to the first one, take a vote on that.
We'll all with the change.
Um.
It's on the floor at all.
Yeah, technically, it has to be followed through, so. Roll call on the first vote to accept the consent agenda as is.
Trustee Gray.
No.
Holston.
No.
Pop.
No.
Raisik.
No.
And Ginzales.
No.
Now, we have a, to confirm, we have a motion, Holston and second by Gray, to approve the consent agenda except item one. Roll call on that, please.
Trustee Holston.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Yes.
Item four from the consent agenda. The item F one. Is there something we need to add somewhere?
Yeah, I just wanted, there're mostly clarification for the first one under, Mr. Hager, specifically for you, under the clerk's report. There was something in there that says, "It was noted the Secretary of State's office has been contacted for direction." That first sentence there, and I wondered if you could please refresh my memory. I do not remember anything taking place of that about the Secretary of State's office. So, I wonder if there's a way that I could get what was noted and how we received notification of that because I have no recollection.
You're free to listen to the recording if you want, but if you recall, Deputy Powell and I went to a Will Grundy clerk's meeting.
I remember that, yeah.
Presentation was on that subject matter, that's what that's reading.
And he reports about it. He, I do recall him talking about the fact that to destroy documents without proper authorization would be a misdemeanor felony or something.
Well, it could be a classified bill.
I just didn't remember that happening at all, so thanks for.
Yeah, he did mention that.
I didn't, I don't remember that happening at all. And then, the second thing that I wanted to ask about, or just clarification, under the official's report under Parks and Recreation, about my report, just clarification about Kids' Day, the pit bulls will not be participating in the parade, but they are going to be doing a demonstration, education demonstration. So, I just wanted to clarify that, if that could be changed in the minutes.
Did it correctly note what was said at the meeting, though?
No.
Okay.
It did correctly reflect that Kids' Day is in two weeks and correctly reflected that Fall Fest is only nine weeks away, but not that they're going to be participating in the parade and will be doing a demonstration.
So, simply cross off the word parade would be okay?
Because we'll be.
Participating in Kids' Day, correct?
In Kids' Day, yes.
Yep, so if we could simply omit the word parade, then it would suffice to.
And then, the third thing, and this is, I'm sorry, grammar police going to work. If this is a matter of public record, I wondered, I don't know who transcribed this, but I would like to make copies of notes that I made by the grammar police and have those corrected before they are submitted.
Where are you asking?
May, before we pass these, may I correct them with the clerk's office so we can have them perhaps at the next meeting? If these minutes are going to be a matter of public record.
This issue, what do you, I don't, just so you know, I don't see the minutes.
I'm not saying anybody, I'm just saying.
So, point out one of the grammatical flaws we had.
There's really a lot of capitalization in here that are not proper nouns in the middle of sentences that cannot be. So, shall I say "the" bid process in the middle of, that is "one," it should be all lowercase.
The clerk is attempting to find out that the bid process is what is being discussed, just like they're highlighted on, and capitalized on your agenda.
Well, all I'm.
And the minutes are put out by the clerk's office, so you will receive them in the future.
Okay, so if he's taking it as a title item off of the agenda, then I can see the relevance of it, meaning that's capitalization is listed on the agenda that was being discussed. If it's an issue of proper form and regular writing, I understand that as well. But I think if it's a title of a book, it's a title of a thing that's being discussed, then I think it's perhaps an appropriate use of a grammatical adjustment if that's the case.
This is, all I'm bringing up because this has never appeared on any of our minutes before, and all I'm saying is, at this time, there is nothing, as you just stated, it's not saying anything was from an item of the last agenda. His office, as far as I know, his should never be capitalized, and we're talking about God in the middle of a sentence, and "the" mayor in the middle of a sentence, and grandstanding, the word grandstanding capitalized. That's all I'm saying, is I'm.
All right, with some minor corrections to grammatical form in that regard, and the word parade being removed, are we okay to pass the minutes as is?
I do have, I have one other thing. Quorum is for trustees, correct?
Quorum is, um.
Okay, so, we had five village officials last week. We voted three to two for D W on this program. In the minutes, the mayor added his eight vote as a tiebreaker. There was no tiebreaker.
Well, anything pertaining to finance requires an affirmative, an affirmative vote of four.
Okay, that's.
Did I?
You're right.
I mean, if you look at the minutes, it looks like we were deadlocked and you made your decision, which is what your right is.
Right. Well, I voted just like you did. Well, I voted just like you did.
No, I understand, it's all about wording, and what we're talking about is, the last few times, the votes went Gonzalez, Pop, and Raisik, yes, Nays, Gray, Holston. The mayor added his eight vote as a tiebreaker. It's, if it's.
It wasn't, okay, to correct, Larry, I believe it would not be a tiebreaker, then it would be the.
Correct, that's my point.
The majority necessary.
That's my point.
All right, that's fine, so we can correct that as well. So, it'll say to make the majority necessary.
I believe, and, you know, I might be, you know, upsetting a few people, but all we're asking is the minutes, not the opinions.
Larry, have some, sorry. I know, I'm finding my, I didn't know if you were. Okay.
That's, just want to get that right.
Okay. Okay, so, Corke Hager, you have some modifications that need to be adjusted there, and we can address that. All right, with those adjustments being made, are we ready to approve these minutes? I'll entertain a motion to approve these minutes with the adjustments as requested.
I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay, Gonzalez and Pop. Roll call, please.
Trustee Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
And Holston.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, at this point, um, we get, when you, you want to go and do yours?
Well, the only thing I was going to announce is we have a new W P A L volunteer in training tonight. He's offered to work for several months for us as he can. Adam Warden is a recent graduate, graduate of Knox College with a degree in economics and two minors in business and philosophy. So, he's here just to help us out, he's training with Dorrit.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you. And under the mayor's agenda, so there's nothing else, correct? Under the mayor's agenda, we have a presentation for Enbridge Pipeline, and this is the preemptive. So, as people are asking, what's going on, I seem digging and trenching and burying and whatever else. We had the opportunity to meet with a representative of Enbridge, and I just felt like the rest of the officials in the public would also like to know some of what's going on when they start making their progress to extend their petroleum pipeline?
Yes.
Okay, so, if you want to introduce yourself and give a little bit of explanation of what's going on?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Jennifer Smith, and I'm a community relations manager for Enbridge Energy, and we are a pipeline operator in this area. We have both an existing petroleum or crude oil transmission line that originates in Pontiac, Illinois, and it comes up into northwest Indiana and to one of our facilities in Sherrville. And we also are part owners and operators of the Vector Pipeline, which comes through the village of Monee, and that is actually a natural gas line. Each of you should have packets, there are some fact sheets available for the public, anybody that's interested. So, I'm here tonight to talk about a new pipeline that we are planning to build. We actually announced our Line seventy-eight project last year and had a series of open houses, including one in Crete. There's a map, it might be a little hard to see over here, but the, our existing pipeline and.
Hold on just a second, we're going to have him put it up here.
Okay, so you guys.
I already, I already seen it, anyone says it's a public.
Okay, yep. So, our existing line, as well as the new line, the proposed route, both run southeast of the actual village limits, but it's, it's close enough that, that we felt that, again, the village and the public should be informed. Our existing line, we're carrying crude oil, we supply about seventy percent of the crude oil that's refined and used right here in the Midwest. It's all transported on Enbridge Lines. The existing line carries about two hundred and thirty-five thousand barrels per day. The new line that we are planning to build and proposing to build will carry about five hundred and seventy thousand barrels a day. You'll see on the map that we have, the blue line is our existing line that went in in the fifties. The new route is the red line that's depicted on the map, and it pretty much follows the same corridor, the same right-of-way, up until it gets into Will County and Cook County area, and that's due to either existing development that's occurred since the fifties or proposed development that we've talked to different landowners about. Our land agents have been out there talking with every parcel or property owner along the route since early last year. We're at about eighty-six percent acquired on our easement agreements. We have an agreement with each individual landowner that will give us permanent easement rights as well as temporary working space. Our schedule right now is that this fall, we would like to begin clearing the right-of-way, which is the most visible step, initial step in the process. So, we're trying to, to again, make sure that we're reaching out not only to those landowners that are directly affected and impacted, but to also nearby townships and villages. We will have about four to five hundred people working on this line. It's about seventy-nine miles between Pontiac and our facility up in Sherrville, Indiana. We're in the process now of identifying our general contractor. There are pipeline contractors that only do large-scale, large diameter pipes as we're going to be building here, and they will be having what's called two spreads along the line. So, somewhere along the middle of the line will be our base for the contractor. And benefits to, for this project for the village of Monee is, I'm sure, once we get crews out on the ground, you should see increased utilization of any hotels, campgrounds, restaurants, gas stations, auto mechanics, laundromats, you name it. It's kind of a traveling town that, that works on the pipeline. Pipeline construction is done in a very linear fashion. There are various steps, I actually have some brochures that depict the various phases of pipeline construction. Again, the first phase being clearing. So, we need to get the right-of-way prepped for our construction crews. There will be large equipment that will be coming through, including the trenching machines, we have side booms. We'll have about a hundred and fifty-foot workspace, that may vary depending on the negotiations with the individual landowners. But, so, any trees, brush, structures, we will, we'll need to clear that. So, again, that's, that's kind of the first step, and very visual, and we're planning to do that this fall. The actual construction itself, where you'll start to see the pipeline begin to be laid out in the right-of-way, the welding crews coming through, that won't start until spring of two thousand and fifteen. And that's just based on our scheduling and when the pipes, actual pipe is available. The pipes come in on rail, they come in in eighty-foot, eighty-foot joints is what they're called, so you'll see three joints to a truck. Our permitting group is out there right now, working with the county, working with the townships, and any, any of the municipalities where we would have to actually have those trucks come through, we're working on road use agreements right now.
Excuse me, what was that dimension?
Eighty-foot joints.
Eighty?
Yes, they'll come, three eighty-foot joints per truck. Special trucks designed to carry those.
Going down special roads and every other.
Exactly, so that's, that's our permitting folks are.
I'm sure I heard you right.
Yes, you did.
At age seventy-two, things get kind of cloudy at times.
And it's, it's thirty-six inch diameter pipe, so if you think about that, that's about the size of a boom. So, it is, it's quite, it's quite something to see, and actually, once we get construction going next year, we'll be inviting our local officials out to do right-of-way tours so that we can show you the various phases of construction, and you can see the, the safety measures that are built in and followed during construction. But, again, so we want to, we want to make sure we're out here, myself and others, reaching out to all of the villages, the townships. Done a presentation at the county already, an update to the board a couple of months ago, and want to make sure that, you know, once, hopefully, you all have seen a newsletter, a notification letter on this project. We want to keep the public informed and make sure you all have contacts on the fact sheets. There's actually a toll-free number and an email address that goes right to our project team, and those are responded to within about twenty-four hours, if it's during the week, on the weekend, it might take a little bit longer.
That's the eight-five-five number?
Yes, yep, that's a toll-free number.
Would you repeat that since we're on television?
Oh, sure, so it's one eight-five-five seven-one-four eight-three-seven-two, or there's a project email address at Line, it's Line seventy-eight, the number seven-eight, project at enbridge.com. And this fact sheet, and actually, some of the displays from our open houses are also available at www'enbridge.com.
She'd also, when we met previously, she's also going to, as a mayor, she's going to provide us some basic information so that as fall approaches, when your crews are out there, we can post something on the website so people can have a place to identify, oh, that's what they're doing.
Absolutely.
And none of this is anywhere near any of our currently zoned residential areas or anything like that, it's just kind of skirting, I think, near Nacky and Crete-Monee Road, down towards the industrial area of South Bay, Arcoy Pave, right there, general area, I believe.
Yeah, that's actually outside of the.
Yes, it hits us a little bit, but it's, we'll start from a short one.
So, again, we just, we wanted to, to make sure we're out here doing public awareness outreach, if there are any groups in the area that you think might be good for me to, to come talk to. You know, the, like I said, there'll be about four to five hundred workers that will come out and work on this project. Typically, the pipeline contractor brings about fifty to sixty percent of their own specialized workforce, but they do go to the local union halls, your, your operators, your laborers, your pipe fitters, to fill the rest of their labor needs. So, we should have a contractor identified very soon. It is announced, we announce it publicly in our newsletters, which we'll make sure you all get, and on our website as well. So, if anybody's interested in subcontracting or wondering who's doing the work out there.
When you do dig in Illinois, you, you see Illinois contractors.
Yeah, so we actually have.
Try to.
We, we have built in our contract language incentives and encouragement for our, our general contractor to use local subs. And, you know, they, they do, we've got, actually, we've got a number of projects going on in Illinois right now where we've got quite a few local companies working, including me and some other electricians and stuff. But, yeah, absolutely, and, and on the website, too, there's a link to our major projects procurement department that businesses can contact if they're interested.
So, can you, girl in the room, so if you can clarify for me, for Enbridge, then you're moving a lot of crude oil, and it goes then to northern Illinois, northern Indiana?
Yes.
To a refinery?
Yes.
Which refineries do they go to?
We actually.
Kind of like the middleman, right?
We are, we're called Midstream, we only transport crude oil, and the crude oil is owned by the refineries. So, we supply all of the refineries in the Midwest. So, if you're getting gas at a gas station, seventy to seventy-five percent of that gas probably was crude oil at one point transported on Enbridge's pipeline, overall.
North American crude oil, right?
Yes, so our system originates in Alberta, Canada, as well as North Dakota. And that's a good question, because actually, this is part of what we call our Eastern Access Suite of, of projects that we have going on, and the goal here is to get more North Dakota Bakken crude to our area refineries, as well as further east. So, once the, once the crude goes to our northwest Indiana facility, we supply refineries right there. We actually, we can supply refineries here in Illinois, not too far away, and then we can transport on further east into Detroit area. We supply in Ohio and New York as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, thank you again for letting me come and talk about the project, and we'll have to come back if you'd like.
Appreciate it. Okay. We're watching people work, get up, part of the pipeline right now, we're just watching people work. Item number two on the agenda, Hamilton, Cleveland, real alignment. Superintendent Fazell and Mr. Batista and I had the opportunity to engage Will County as well as I-DOT on a project that had lapsed. According to documentation we'd received from I-DOT, State Representative Lisa Dugan had secured eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in funding for participation in a project for the realignment of Hamilton, Cleveland, back in late two thousand and nine. And a letter was sent to the administration a year later almost, and indicating that since we were no longer interested as a village in doing the realignment, that they were, they were rescinding the funding for that. And a lot of us were probably not aware of the fact that the funding had been set aside and then later rescinded because of lack of action on our part. We reached out to I-DOT and Will County, and it looks like we've encouraged them to re-implement the original set aside of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and perhaps more from I-DOT, as well as, which at the time was supposed to have been about half of the cost of the project. We've also talked to Will County, and we're trying to get information tendered in time to Will County for their S T P fund program, whereas they might be able to match perhaps two million dollars. So, that being the case, we may have an opportunity for Hamilton and Cleveland finally to get realigned. I'm not going to make any guarantees, it's all based on whether we get approved, and there's a point system that's in place, but I-DOT has given us a verbal intent to honor the previous Secretary of I-DOT's offer to provide the funding. So, at this point, I just want to give you all a heads up that we are taking steps to pursue the possibility of it, and I'm pleased. You know, and that's part of the reason why it's important for us to stay engaged in some of these programs, be it Will County, South suburban mayors, whichever the case may be, because that's where we get our partnership and our support from, and try to get things done that we can't do otherwise. There are no earmarks, per se, anymore supposedly from Congress or federal funds, but they do send them to zones, and we have the benefit of being part of Will County, but also being a part of South suburban, so we get the double support, if you will, and, and the endorsements we need from that, so just want to give you a heads up on that.
Mayor, wasn't there also something with Lisa Dugan's letter about a possible reconfiguration of the bridge?
No, no, this, this had to do with, because of the increased traffic and the, the fact that Cleveland and Hamilton are not aligned, Hamilton's not going to move, but there was a potential, and the discussion was, back when Bill McHenry still owned both gas stations, the truck stop and BP, of doing a land swap, and he was, at the time, was interested in that. McHenry no longer is the owner of those properties. So, we have to engage the current property owner of the, the old truck stop there, I keep thinking of Monee City South Truck Stop. But we need to engage with them, and I think, Larry, are you going to try to reach out to them, I believe?
Yes, sir.
And try to see if we can get their interest in that, which would mean, basically, where the entrance to their truck stop is, and this is what was presented to McHenry years ago, where the entrances to the truck stop currently would actually be where Cleveland would be moved to, which might mean a concession on our part, where currently they have highway signs that are super tall and everything else. Those would be perhaps on the other side of their, you know, if we'd allow them to keep their signs there, something of that sort, it might be kind of close to where the road is and everything, but we'll do what we can to try to make sure this thing happens. So, even if there's some special use and all that kind of stuff, we need to make sure this happens, because we've had our own squad cars with T-bones out there, and people just, it's, people get target fixation, not reading signs and everything else, and do it just, we probably have in excess of twenty thousand vehicles a day at that intersection, and it's, just try to go into Dunkin' Donuts or something else, and I mean, it's. Item number three, issues related to Sunrise Park. I've had a chance to talk to a couple of trustees, this has been a busy week for everybody, I'm sure. We may have almost lost the park in Walker's Grove because it wasn't ours. It was a situation where typically, when a subdivision is being developed, there's an agreement between the developer and the municipality that a, an outlet will be dedicated for the purpose of a park. And in this particular case, there was frustration on the part of the administration, a couple of administrations. I think it dates back to when Larry Cockle was still mayor, and then my program was administrator, and I'm not sure how much I've carried into Tim O'Donnell's term, but. The park was subpar in its original construction, the equipment that was over there, and the village had sent letters, and I included some of those for you, it just took us a while to gather all that, but whereas the village was not interested in taking possession of the park until the construction of the. until the preconstruction of the playground was, you know, acceptable. Change of administration, things of that sort, kind of got lost in the shuffle, there's an assumption that it was ours and it wasn't. On our maps, it actually shows that it's ours, but you look at the Recorder Deeds website and it's not ours. As a matter of fact, it got sold for taxes. And talking to the trustee, the tax trustee, they realized our situation and were more than willing to work with us as a municipality, but we have to buy our own park back as an alternative to getting involved in a legal negotiation that we may or may not win, and would be much more costly than the amount that's owed in back taxes. So, I'm looking for permission from the board to cut a check for six hundred dollars and six hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents, so that we can take deed of our park. So, little Johnny isn't upset because he doesn't have somewhere to play. Entertained motion to approve that?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Gonzalez and Raisik, any discussion?
So this is back taxes?
Yeah, and a recorder's fee of forty-seven dollars.
And another little bill each year.
It was, oddly enough, the reason why we didn't notice it is that taxes have been paid up till 2009 by the developer, but the developer is no longer in business, was it Rentless Builders?
Rentless and Happy Valley Home Builders?
Yeah. So, that organization is no longer active, and so they stopped paying the taxes about 2009, so we're paying for about three or four years of taxes is the reason why it was sold. What a deal. Roqueau, please.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Item number four, we took a preliminary vote last meeting pertaining to a permanent ownership store specific market assessment, and it was the proposal that we had received of seven thousand dollars plus certain expenses, and I believe it was, consensus was taken that it was not to exceed, what, twelve thousand dollars, I believe is what minutes reflect. So, I am looking for a reaffirmed vote on that issue. Is there a motion to reaffirm the vote?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Alton Holston? Roqueau, please.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
No.
Holston?
Yes.
Head pop?
Yes.
Just want to make sure we get the form of this. We have had a number of requests over the years, I guess, for a sign program, directional signage, that would be maintained by the village. I've done some research and looked at other municipalities, like Manteno has a really nice one, that they've got some local signs, a little smaller in their in-town areas, which is suitable, directing you how to get to McDonald's, how to get to the library, or whichever different locations you might be interested in going to. I still believe we need to pursue that, and I'd like to consider, like to keep moving forward with that. Specifically, I think that as we try to encourage development in our industrial park, it's important for us to look into the possibility of having some directional, like a monument signed on the corner of Industrial and Governors, that isn't a TIF district. Potentially, we could, I just talked to, I think I talked to Larry as well as Darrell on this as well, and I believe that we could, there's, if you recall, in front of Aracoi Paving, just trying to give you guys a perspective on this, that there's a four, three and a half, four acre parcel that's right there. When they moved Industrial, it used to go straight, New Brunswick's Industrial used to go straight into Route 50, but when they realigned it, they took it, took it up at a ninety. So there's about a half acre, three quarters of an acre that's on the south side of Industrial right at Governors. So it'd be the southwest corner of Industrial and Governors. Frankly, it isn't buildable. It's owned by the same person who owns the properties, the northwest side. That's actually one parcel, it's never been subdivided, it's one parcel. And in the past, there had been signs there that I believe were taken down a few years What I would like to do is have Larry reach out to the property owner to see if they'd be interested, because it's not buildable, they're paying taxes on it right now unnecessarily because frankly, there's not a whole, you can put on a small parcel there from a commercial perspective. We would have the ability to underwrite this with TIF funds, as long as it's supporting the initiative of the business district there, the development plans in that area. So I would like to have Larry reach out to the Hamphles, I believe is his gentleman's name?
Is that what you came up with?
Yeah, I think, sorry. Just to see if they're interested in, they might be, frankly, they might be interested in just giving up that portion of the property, so they have a reduced taxable, you know, because, and then if we could put a monument sign there, promote the businesses, be directional signage, it would, it would help people understand we have business opportunities, development potential down in that area, as well as promoting the businesses that are down Industrial. So, it's a win-win if we can, we can do this and the cost of the sign, things of that sort, even possibly the clothing costs, et cetera, for the, that parcel and the subdivided that could be underwritten by TIF funds. So, can I get a, kind of a consensus? We don't really need a vote, we're not really making a decision at this point, I just want to get a general idea, are you guys okay with that?
Can I just pose a couple of questions?
Yes, please. This is still discussion, that's fine.
And I would, I would like to see that too, because then it will give clear direction to the businesses that are already back there, so truckers who need to go find folks back there. But I would ask also that the village reach out to the people who are back there and say, hey, you know, we're thinking about doing this monument sign, and have them absorb some of the costs to put up the actual signage-
Right.
-so they know, like, which address, like in a business park, you have 2321, 2323, and, you know, they would be able to do that.
Yeah, and I agree, that's what I was saying as well, where the village would absorb the cost of the structure, but to make sure that there is consistency, much like you have a sign out in front of Chute's, Lemons Plaza, whatever, where you have, you have consistency on the shape and the style and all that kind of stuff, we would establish a, if you call it covenant or just some, a certain standard on our monument signs that we'd be implementing. Like Manteno, when you drive through Manteno, you look at their directional signs, they all have a consistent shape, feel, style, whatever you call it.
All on one board.
What's that?
An all on one board, rather than, so, and I would be in favor of that, I think that would help all of them. However, I think, have any of them been, you know, the ones that are already there been spoken to about this?
Well, they've been reaching out to us.
Nice, okay.
And this has been a concern for theirs, for them for years. We've allowed, like, real estate signs to be temporary in that area, because it's kind of off the beaten visibility area there. It would probably have to be a rather large sign because of the speed at which people are driving past there, to make sure they had adequate visibility, especially on the northbound traffic, it would be less that to see it if it was a small sign. So it would have to be suitable in size to be useful.
Would this need to go through a zoning committee?
I don't think so, I think it'd just be acquisition and it would be-
In terms of the signs?
Yeah, but if it's village-owned, it's a little bit different. And if the property be owned by the village, the sign would be owned by the village, it would be up to us to set the specifications for how that would work. It would be an ex, it would be a bit of an exception, I believe, or are you correct?
Yes, sir. I think we don't have my friend's signs on coming down Moni, Manhattan, the residential?
No, not that I can think of, down by Bill's House?
I thought I one time talked about the-
Well, Eagle Fair has signed at the end of Governors there, but that's not even our property, that's actually a railroad property, I think. So that's technically not legal.
Yeah, I saw it, okay. Does we buy the public lot?
Just a corner, the corner that's been orphaned, if you will, because they got three acres to the north of that-
Okay.
-and this will be like the three quarter of an acre, whatever it is, it's, you know, kind of orphaned because it's too close to the road, too small to actually do anything else on. And I believe it's Peter Hamphles? Does that sound right, Bill?
I just remember they own, they wanted a hot dog stand and they don't even live anywhere in the area.
Yeah, but they own the property, so-
Right. So, let's make the consensus of, yeah, let's go ahead, move forward on this.
Trustee Raisik?
Yeah.
Trustee Pop?
Okay.
All right, so Larry, if you can reach out to Mr. Hamphles, see if there's, we'll talk about details in a minute. I have item six, Egyptian Trail Resolution in MFC? Mr. Batista or Mr. Frazel, would you like to address that topic?
In order to move forward with the Egyptian Trail project, complete Phase One, we would look to use the MFT funds that are allotted, the village, to move forward with that, and I believe Mr. McKenna has the resolution, the proposal.
Do you want to, you want to just, you know?
Sure.
Let me see if I've got a copy there.
Okay. Yeah, what the, the resolution and the agreement in there, it allows you guys to use the MFT fund. So, the state requires you to pass a resolution indicating what your intention is, and then that MFT agreement is essentially an engineering agreement in format of IDOT's agreements, and then we attach to that the same exact scope and fee breakdown that you guys had in front of you when we submitted the proposal. So this just gives you the option using that, those MFT dollars to pay for the Phase One engineering. So what we do is, we need to get this approved, and then from there, we send four executed copies to the state so they have it on file.
And I just want to bring the board up to speed, I know this interview is a little intense, but while you're here, I believe we still have not received the information we're looking for from the previous engineering firms, is that correct?
Correct. I guess what we've done, we could go Thursday, we had a kickoff meeting, maybe I can just kind of back up.
Sure.
We scheduled a kickoff meeting, called all of our transportation engineers, the mayor was present at that meeting, as well as Administrator and Superintendent Public Works, and we kind of went through where the project is, got some ideas and input as far as concerns with the village, kind of went through that schedule, and we have been, in the meantime, looking at some other funding options that could be a possibility, and also completed a site visit to get going and start to look at this, and then we're able to develop a list of the information we need that had been completed, looked like it was completed, in order to get that electronically from the previous firm. So that was sent off, and we're still waiting to hear back. Administrator's been working with them to try and get that information and data from them.
So, I guess at this point, I understand a motion to approve the use of MFT funds for the Phase One aspect of Egyptian Trail?
Do you have to, I don't know, are you required to pass the resolution and the agreement with two separate votes?
Specifically, the resolution.
The resolution will cover the agreement.
So it's going to be the resolution to be passed?
So there'll be a resolution I'm looking for, sir?
Twenty fourteen dash seven.
So, I entertain a motion for the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so the Holston and Raisik?
Excuse me, what was that number again?
Two zero one four dash seven.
And this, Mr. McKenna, will be our resolution, or we need a formal resolution in the form of a packet that we usually get?
That's a form we use, yes.
That's the state's form, yeah.
I believe it's the state's form, rather than our packet, Moni or packet. Thank you.
Discussion?
Yes, sir.
Obviously, it's a very important project, if you want to get it going, my question is to my Department of Public Works, David Frazel, how he gets DJ, I don't know, we'll talk about that some other time. But, seriously, Colonel, using motor fuel tax dollars, how does that impact our roads and other things that we normally would use that money for? Are we going to be in trouble? Do we have to allocate money to somewhere else?
I believe this is also part of the budget.
Yes, good evening. Trustee Pop, you are correct, that MFT is allocated for projects such as this road. It's a motor fuel tax that we get a certain percentage every month of. We do try to budget and watch what we use that for. We have traditionally in the past used it to buy roads all, traditionally in the past used for road projects, various other things within the communities. We have to just make sure that we budget that. Recently, at the last board meeting, maybe two board meetings, MFT funds became available, we talked about at the special board meeting, for being able to use them for possible tree removal. So we have to be very frugal on how we use that money, because it only replenishes so fast. So, if we plan to use this percentage to help fund the eighty-twenty match, we have to make sure how we watch it now. We have budgeted for this expenditure, it was planned, as we knew that we were going to have to redo Phase One, so it won't necessarily impact us, because as we replenish that balance every month, we should be back to where we were in a few months, and we'll just have to watch that to make sure that it gets back in there.
I must say, you realize that, I want a compliment here.
Very good.
Thank you.
And just so the board is aware, we get roughly, Darrell, ten thousand a month on the tax.
Correct.
Occasionally, capital bill, we get an extra nine or ten thousand dollars or something like that. We know, Roqueau, please?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
And Gonzalez?
Yes.
Under the official report, Mr. Gray?
The only thing I'd like to say is, with all the storms last week, I do appreciate to see Public Works out, myself personally sitting out at one, two o'clock in the morning, seeing the trucks driving around, taking care of what they need to do. I know they're being stopped by people, asking questions and hearing more than helpful. Again, I do appreciate the Public Works being out there all night and then seeing them back out to the next day, still going at it, kind of little sleep, the DJ and your crew, I do appreciate that. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez?
And basically, I'll just talk about Kids Day, but I know Mr. Batista, and he will probably handle that pretty well. This Saturday, so please spread the word, Kids Day, again, our second annual, and as I understand, to all the businesses that participated last year, were more than eager to help us out again this year. So we will have, obviously, specials all day long, for, all day and every day, you know, for most of the hours on Saturday, from the businesses, including slurpees and tacos and special haircuts and pizza and things available for the kids, from the businesses who are generously donating them, as well as activities in Environment's Park, all afternoon, starting at 2:00 PM. It's going to be, start with a lineup for the Kids Day Parade at the police station to went through town and end up at Environment's Park, and then the activities, stations across the whole, the whole park, from three to six, and then from six to eight-thirty, we'll have a DJ with karaoke and everything, and then the climate, how should I say that? The end of the evening will be Frozen, our second movie in the park. So I know all the kids will enjoy that as well. And then too, we did have our second Kids Day volunteer meeting on Tuesday. So again, I want to thank Ruben for everything that he's doing, and then Kevin, who is like pretty much the volunteer chairperson of the Moni area churches, has done a fabulous job with volunteers. We do want still about six to ten more volunteers to help man stations, to help the kids, guide the kids along through the park and everything, so if you can or are available through some of those hours, please let us know, and there will be a volunteer station, a tent set up at the very front of the- And there will be a volunteer station, a tent set up, uh, at the very front of the, of Environment's Park that all the volunteers can go to for their assignments that day.
I, I wanted to throw in there, Norm, you've been recruited. You're helping Sid, yeah, I think you're helping Sid with the golfing issue. Anyway, uh, on the specials, the, by the way, Trustee Gonzalez, last year, when you pulled together the, how you call the, the kids scavenger hunt with the businesses, that was phenomenal, uh, and, you know, I'll, I'll bring back when I was in First Meadows Bank, uh, Saturday morning, uh, that last year. And the kid walks up, mom pushes him out of the van, says, "Go and get your free thing" or whatever. And kid goes in and says, "Can I have my taco?" You know, kids are just so hard, their parents are put back, it was fun. Uh, read the list, there's a flyer out there, uh, read the list. Some of the specials are a little bit different this year. Time, uh, times have been limited on some of them. And just, I just wanna make sure that, you know, people don't, you know, like, seven eleven's actually the numbers a day before because it's...
Well, that's a national pre-sleeping day.
Yeah, right, so they're just the numbers a day before, not the day, our day. So, they're, so we put it on there, seven eleven instead of seven twelve, which, anyhow, so. Okay, um...
Five A, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I know Ruben worked very hard on this, but no trustee works harder than I do on that. And I gotta make one comment, I need, so much going on. You didn't mention what time the parade kicks off. And I don't know if they wanna tell them the route.
And, um, and Tony probably celebrated that because, you know, the, the parade kickoff or the, they will start lining up at the police station. This is kids walking, just kids walking, um, and with bikes and wagons and strollers and things, just kids. And we'll lead off with the police, um, and with our, the, the bike patrol and then, and with the fire department. So, there's not gonna be any floats or anything, but it's just the kids walking and end up at Fireman's. But the step off for the parade will be two thirty to arrive at the park by three. And what's the, and what's the route?
No, I'm not sure of the route at this time. Sergeant Group isn't charged that, he didn't tell me the route.
It's, uh...
Yeah, sorry, I'm gonna go on this side.
That's okay, that's okay. It's, um, from the police department, Main Street, Main Street East to East Gate, East Gate North into the park. So, and line up at two o'clock and two thirty, we'll get off.
Trustee Olson?
Um, I have no report on business development, but I would like to report on the rental ordinance I'm working on. I'm still working with Ruben to get some additional mortgage on that. But, um, I did ask and, uh, thanks to Deputy Clerk Powell, got some information on, uh, what we have in Moni. We're, we're showing twenty one hundred and sixty-eight homes in Moni, two thousand one sixty-eight. Of that, a hundred and thirty-two are showing as vacant and sixty-five are rental properties. Now, we're not sure how...
Sixty-five of the vacants or sixty-five of the...
Sixty-five of total are rental, are being rented. Now, that probably is a low number because that's kind of a guess. And that's one of the reasons for the rental program is to be able to determine how many homes are rental and be able to monitor some of that. And again, we're doing this as a result of citizens' inquiry earlier this year. So, we'll continue to work on that. We have some language, we've had input from various departments. And I would expect by next month, we will have some, um, information on a proposed rental.
And Trustee Olson, see me in the next couple of days, um, the, I got something from the Realtors Association. They were acknowledging all the municipalities that seem to be doing this now and, uh, that there might be some good nuggets to borrow from that as well. I know you got a lot of good information there, Mr. Batista's gathered and helped you with as, as far as well, but...
Okay.
Trustee Horn is not here. Darrell, do you have anything to offer pertaining to finance?
No.
Other than, see you in two weeks and, uh...
That's pretty much it.
Yeah. Uh, Trustee Pop?
Did you want to get mentioned in the meeting I went with you?
Yeah, yeah, that, that's fine.
I'm very excited about it. Uh, I did mention it to a couple of the trustees. I didn't get to all of them, but we do have a company that's coming into Moni, in the Tiff area. It's called Budrick Truck Lines Facility. I have a very small growing, you can't see, but, uh, they're gonna be taking up a large parcel. And what did they say, Eddie? They're gonna build a brand new building, a facility, and they have a, a Phase Two program with it. What's the original building name?
Yeah, the, the, Budrick is a refrigerated trucking company. Uh, they actually have a hearing next week for the planning and zoning meeting, um, for special use. The property they're looking at is on the end of Industrial Drive. It's commonly, uh, Aggie's property. I won't give it, I won't publicly acknowledge the nickname it has in our community. And it's, uh, all the way to the end of Industrial Drive. And, um, they are looking to build a fifty thousand square foot, forty-seven something, square foot refrigerated facility. Apparently, there's only two or three competitors in their industry. And, uh, actually, one of those, one of the other ones is just north of Moni. And, um, not in a town, outside our city limits, but, um, this is a big improvement for them. Their special use that they're going to be going for is going to be for the fact that this is currently zoned commercial. They're going to request that it be zoned M long, which would be light industrial, uh, with a request for some outside storage. There will be a limited amount of refrigerant, uh, reefer. There'll be a limited amount of reefer, uh, truck activity because they're trying to do as much as they can internally in their facility. That's the reason why they're building such a large facility. Um, this has the possibility of bringing about sixty jobs, uh, which is another good thing. And, um, they came, this is kind of one of those things where it was a... Uh, Trustee Holston was involved in some discussions with the Will County, uh, what, uh, E, C E D?
E D.
C E D. He, uh, got somebody's attention over there, thankfully. Uh, found out that somebody's complaining about Moni, it wasn't us, it was somebody else who has the same name as us. Um, township, I guess, is a better way to describe it. Um, and, um, they weren't real happy about that. As soon as I found out about it, I, same day, I think, I called them within a couple of hours and, uh, talked to them extensively. That was the day before Memorial Day, or the Friday before Memorial Day. That Tuesday, they came in, we spent two or three hours, showed them a lot of options. They were thrilled, they got more support out of us than the, um, other community that they already owned property, you know, after several meetings. And they were so thrilled that we were so willing to work with them and help them that they, uh, I showed them options and, you know, all this kind of stuff, which is what we need to be doing, working with them. And I thank Trustee Holston for, for getting the attention of the, uh, C E D and making sure that Moni is relevant, uh, for these opportunities. And we followed up with it. Trustee Pop was involved in a meeting because part of code enforcement, building, uh, uh, building department requires the zoning consideration, so I invited him to be at that meeting. And, um, I'm looking forward to it. I, I suspect that the P N Z board will, uh, find this a suitable option for us. It's a great use of the property. Uh, it's a seventy-one acre parcel and they are initially only gonna use about twenty-five acres. With a, with a potential of doubling the size of their, their, their facility without, without extending to the rest of the property. So, they could double it to ninety-five thousand, uh, square foot. And, um, they also have potential of developing other properties south of that. That being said, if I may, I'm sorry, just, just sharing the information. We ought to be excited about these opportunities.
Yep.
Larry's gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm asking Larry now to review. We had a development agreement, uh, we talked about this, the, uh, property just north of their, where the road is not currently extended. Was that Will Partners?
Yes, sir.
It's, I think it's vital, once we get Hamilton Cleveland realigned and we're working towards that, to also look at extending Cleveland all the way down to industrial. So, we have a truck industrial route that doesn't necessarily have to go through town, that can stay in commercial area. As you, as, as the potential of the airport draws closer, that will also eliminate some traffic unnecessarily through town. It's gonna be construction and development related if, if and when that takes place. So, we're looking at the possibilities of, uh, going and extending that road?
Northern Village.
Northern Village, correct. Uh, extending that road and maybe just doing an impact against their pre-commitment to do that for us so that we can get it done instead of waiting for it. There may be an opportunity for a DECO grant, uh, a jobs grant because of the number of jobs that are coming to our community. We may be able to get a grant that'll, that'll match perhaps half of the cost of the infrastructure necessary to take care of that. So, we'll be working on, on that as well. So, Tiff funds can be used, but if we can get part of that matched by a grant for job creation, it's great too. I'm sorry, Trustee Pop today?
Oh, no.
Can I jump in on, on that too?
What's that?
Can I bother you too?
Please.
Just as another addition to that, um, for the benefit of the trustees, I've mentioned to you several times over the last few months that I've been involved with the Will County Economic Development, serve on that committee. And that's the value of these type of relationships, uh, being able to network with these people. And when something like this comes up, on the Will County Economic Development Committee are Realtors, uh, transportation people, uh, major carriers, uh, major players in Will County, uh, for the, uh, transportation and other programs. And I think this is the real value to doing that. And each, each one of us have a piece, my piece on that was just to pass it off, but I think that was important. And when we get these leads and when we have these connections, uh, I do think it's important as trustees, in particular, where we can serve on these committees that we do do that, uh, if possible, uh, or maybe staff members do the same thing. Uh, there's a number of ways to be able to get these leads. And the important thing is when you get them, work them as fast as possible. Uh, we've probably got a couple more right now that are real close to being where we can start doing something with them. And sometimes these smaller, uh, are actually better than some of the big bucks, if you will, uh, because they're more likely to be long-term.
Right.
So, uh...
And some of them live right in areas, and they, they have a incentive for them to stay here.
I mean, they were actually looking in a joint area to us and didn't get cooperation. And that made it even easier for us to go in and say, "Well, look," you know.
And they already own land there.
For those people that say Moni is not, you know, one, you know, not a community that works with people we are, sometimes we just have to, you know, pass it off real quick.
We're, we're changing the perspectives. And it takes two more. And, and, you know, we got, so far, we got three of us have been involved in this process and it's, you know, so... Trustee Pop, do you have anything else, sir?
I, I, I might say that I was very impressed with the company. And believe it or not, I believe wearing my polo shirt that said trustee, which, by the way, Mayor, you instituted. We ought to get those things for those kind of activities, for opening up a store, meeting a potential company coming in. They were impressed that a trustee sat and talked with them. They did not have a good experience somewhere else. And I told them, I did say that the other trustees would probably be just as excited as I was. And that, let me just say that I offered the owner a steak dinner, told him, "It's glad to see you."
I wasn't sure if you were gonna say that publicly or not.
I had to put my wife to work.
Going to my house?
You can go to David's house, he'll bring the wine.
No, the meeting went well, they were very impressed with the village. I was very happy.
Alright. Number six, uh, public safety and police?
I'll be on the science, America.
Okay. Anthony, I know we talked briefly about a situation that arose, uh, over the last couple of weekends. And, um, if, if I may, um, we, we have a situation where we don't have ordinances to support our police to deal with certain types of situations currently. We have state statutes that, uh, deal with sound emitting from a vehicle. And they can enforce that if it's coming from a vehicle. We have local ordinance pertaining to noise as it emits from commercial or industrial as, as it has an impact on residential. We don't have any kind of an ordinance, uh, established, uh, pertaining to people having parties at their homes, uh, that are beyond reasonable. Uh, we had a situation last weekend, um, I'll, I'll go to the one, the week prior, uh, when we had movie in the park. There was a, um, party that taken place over at Eagle Fair. I don't know the details of it. I got, I got a call, uh, I'm sure the police got several calls, um, and they were out there visiting and all that kind of stuff. Be- because they have no teeth, they have no, because we don't, we haven't given them any capability of dealing with it. Um, we have no provisions for it. I think there needs to be a reasonable method of saying, "Somebody else had a party at their house, that's fine. Um, here's the reasonable expectation of being neighborable, talk to your neighbors, all that kind of stuff." Not everybody feels that they need to do that. And as such, that's why government sometimes has to get involved on behalf of the people that are not neighborable. The one in Eagle Fair was mild, pales in comparison to what happened in Gorman last Saturday. And I'll just summarize to say this, there were estimated to be a thousand people at one home. Three hundred vehicles, four hundred vehicles hopping down the streets. If there had been an emergency, a fire, an ambulance, anything else needed to get out there, um, the squad cars couldn't even get to the place without having to drive through the ditches to get there. It was people swarming, it was mob action almost, the number of people that were on the streets. And when we have... When we have situations that take place in Gary and Indianapolis, where we have officers that are being accused of being the reason why the officer in Indianapolis, the family member of the person that shot and killed the officer in Indianapolis, blamed the officer for getting out of his car and enforcing the law. Meanwhile, we have literally mob action almost taking place in our town where we had a thousand people and it was chaos. There was no way emergency vehicles could have responded. Um, you have the more affluent subdivision of our community that would never take into account the need to have no parking on this side of the street or on the cul-de-sacs or anything else. We've never implemented signage out there for any of that. You don't have any, you don't have any means to enforce anything. When you hear about what happened in Indiana and then you see that we only have two officers on duty and they're supposed to go and deal with the situation where you have a thousand people. I'm grateful and thankful that we have, um, mutual aid. Because when somebody thought they heard a shot fired and, um... I don't know how the cops do it. I don't know how they do it. Cause no paycheck is worth not being able to go and near families. We have to give them the teeth. We have to give them the means by, to be reasonable. To a lot of people, I have a party that's reasonable, but we have to give them the, the means by which to make sure that it is not a matter of their own safety or the neighbor's safety. We have to deal with this. And, um, if I hadn't gone out there and I didn't get involved, I didn't get in the middle of it, I just sat in somebody's driveway and watched, if I hadn't seen it firsthand, there's no way I would have believed it.
Is that the same community we had any problem with before?
It's, yeah. And frankly, we have to have consistent standards by which they can and should be enforced, but we have to deal with this. So, I'm asking the trustees to be involved in looking at other municipalities, um, perhaps a little bit bigger that may have had to deal with this longer than we have in some regards. This is, uh, this makes a K, or the, the G eight sound that look minuscule in comparison to what it had an effect on us personally here. So, there's gotta be a means though, if somebody can have a party at their home, not to exceed a certain number of vehicles or not to exceed a certain number of people without, and some towns, they, from what I understand, some towns say if you're gonna have more than a hundred people at your house, you have to pay for an extra police officer being present. I'm not saying we have to do that, but we gotta consider these things. I, I, you know what I'm saying, where there's gotta be some means by which they understand that there's a reasonable way to have a party that's not imposing, uh, scaring your neighbors. a reasonable way to have a party that's not imposing, scaring your neighbors. People couldn't sleep, not just because of the noise, but because they were scared for their lives. And I think bottom line, when we ended up having everybody that responded to mutual aid, I think we had what, thirty officers that responded?
Quite a bit, yeah.
And they came from South Heights, they came from University Park, they came from Crete, Beecher, Peaton and County. And, you know, and Beecher, for them to respond, they were just finishing up their, their, their summer fest. So, they didn't necessarily have the staffing necessary to leave what they were doing there, but they can. So...
May I ask, Larry, our lawyer, the previous incident we had, is that already resolved? Can it be talked about at all?
I don't believe so.
Okay, you can't talk about it?
I wouldn't, not yet. I would have to check insurance fence on that, but I believe that's closed. I don't think it's been...
That's, that's enough. You know, I'm just saying.
And I just wanted to ask too, because I don't know what happened, and I would, Mr. Batista too, we now have an EMA director and an agency. I just wanted to know, is that in our emergency response team or plan, or should it be, and could that be part of that plan?
As, as far as that emergency call, that's, that's going to come to a law enforcement response because of the call being shots fired. So they're coming in regards to public safety with concerted firearm. So that's going to be the, the level of response. As far as EMA would be concerned, that would be more for an evacuation plan after the initial disaster occurs. So as it's happening live, real time, that's not going to be something that EMA would be about. These are unarmed volunteers that are not with weapons.
Well, I'm not saying like our emergency evacuation team, however, like our first responders or the trained personnel of which you have partnerships with, is that part of that plan? And should this be something, if we're giving to, to our police department, this might be something that we should be considering?
Yes, the, the EMA would be a supplement, a support staff to law enforcement, to fire. So if there, if the folks were evacuated due to some, we have a fire, we've got multiple injuries, EMA would be called in to do a traffic, to reroute traffic, to house, to shelter. It would be in addition in support of what's already occurring with fires with police. So...
Especially if it's a self-imposed type of situation like that. Now, I will, I will ask, like trustee Gonzalez is asking, if it were a planned event where there is a request for support in advance and you needed to have some traffic and other kind of things like that.
Yes.
That is something where we could participate and stipend, you know, it could be subsidized by the party host or whatever the situation would be. It wouldn't necessarily require police presence, but it would allow for some support.
Right. If there's, so if there's a mechanism in place for a permit, if it's already, it's been okay by the village for this party and, you know, there would be a plan that would have to be enacted, their first aid.
So this might be something first, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
But on a, but on a, but on a response, not pre-planned in a situation like that? Mr. Grozeg.
I'm, I'm maybe out of line, but I need to answer your question. I am an EMA volunteer, but I'm not qualified to enforce the law.
Oh, no, and that's not, certainly, and certainly not, that's what I'm asking, but I'm asking our EMA director and all the connections and all the agencies and the things that we belong to because of having a Mr. Batista. We should have the mechanisms to give our police departments some help. Now, I'm going to give you some riot gear and have you go out there.
Trustee Hydis, trustee Gonzalez, I'm, I'm also a CERT volunteer and part of the mantra there is if there's, if there's violence involved, they don't show up until it's done. That's part of the program. They don't do it. And I won't.
Well, and there again, just, just to clarify, emergency management is more for management and support. It's, it's not really to, search and rescue is part of that, it's a support to the system. But when you're dealing with issues like, like you're indicating, you might be a trained nurse, but when you're on the CERT or EMA team and you're going to search and rescue, you're not to be doing, what do you call it? Nursing, you know, you're not to be doctoring the wounds and things like that if you're on a CERT, you know, recovery type thing. There's a whole limitation to what there's, so even if somebody is a, let's say an officer in another community and they happen to be a part of the team, they shouldn't, you know, they would be going beyond the scope of what they're sanctioned to do by the structure of the organization. And they would not be covered by ordinance comp, they wouldn't be covered by liability insurance or anything else if they stepped outside the scope of the...
You're, yes, you're, you're correct. You're authorized to perform in the role that you are employed or that you're volunteering for sanctioned by the municipality. So for an EMA, an EMA role, we're only authorized to, to move in that role, operate in that role. But there is an emergency operation plan that every municipality with an EMA is required to have. And Moni has one, but it was written in nineteen ninety-six. So now that an EMA ordinance has been established, we have two years to put an operation plan together. And that's under the authority of Will County, which is under the authority of EMA. So, Will County is working with us to establish now, because much has changed since nineteen ninety-six, just with structure and businesses and, and roadways and, and agencies as well. So, the plan is being put together and it would be, as you said, it would be to manage an incident. So, it would be in conjunction with law enforcement, with, with fire. And the three would work together, the chief of police, the fire chief, the EMA director would establish a plan, but according to the incident itself, would determine who has the jurisdiction to actually be the commander over that incident. So...
But if I understand correctly, if I decide to have a party this weekend with a thousand people, there's nothing you can do?
And, and actually, there, there may be, and Ruben helped me on this, or Anthony did one. By local ordinance, no. By statute, if there were truly a potential for mob action that would have been, been established, there would be some state statute that would have allowed for cause against the host of the party for establishing such a thing. And technically, the host of the party could be arrested for mob action if that were the case. I don't think, I, I use that term loosely because I'm not a legal expert. I'm not sure if that's a correct use of that. The reality was, the neighborhood was thrilled just to see the party break up and people get out of there. So, I, I think there might have only been one citation that showed that it was parked too close to a substation. That was because the car was abandoned overnight in the subdivision. But other than that, I, I think that in that situation, while there's, I, I observed people were so like in the face of what was going on, they were shooting rum and candles out of their cars as they were being pushed out of the thing there. And even though there's cops, you know, a half a block in either direction from where they're at, blatant disregard for the law, blatant disregard for the neighborhood.
Well, shooting the fireworks is illegal, right?
It is, but when you have twenty or thirty cops and they're all trying to deal with the incident of a thousand, the people that are leaving, there's not enough officers to detain somebody who's blocking...
So there, there were laws being broken, there just wasn't enough?
Infinitely, probably.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Not only that, but that spilled out to different parts of the town too. So not only did you have one situation in the subdivision, it spilled out to our businesses along Long Mountain Road, our gas stations, because that's where they ended up. And at one point, I was there by myself with one other officer around two hundred people.
And that was not an officer from Archer, or should I say?
No, it's from University Park. And I got called in from home.
We have, we have some hard work to do and thank God for the other communities responding with it to help, except even that wasn't enough.
Well, and there again, we, if it wasn't such a serious, you, you can't plan for something like, I mean, you can, kind of theme, like you're planning for the worst. You hope it never happens. You know, we haven't taken the steps to plan accordingly. Apparently this has been a problem in the past, multiple times and, and not just one area. So we just need to find a reasonable way to address this. So, we just need to work on it. So, yeah.
If I could just, in one word, describe it, we were overwhelmed. We just, we just did the best that we could. We really were overwhelmed in that situation. And we tried to just make sure that the public safety was one. At the gas stations, we paid attention to the business owners, because their gas stations were filled with people standing around the side. And they weren't, they weren't customs at that point. Some of them were, but probably ninety percent weren't.
So it'd be like a thousand motorcycles riding into town.
It doesn't matter what kind of vehicle they're driving. And it was so bad that people, as they were leaving Gorman, were just walking on Regentland Avenue, which is not a walking pathway. They had, dark clothes and you can't even see them. And I'm surprised somebody didn't get in the door.
Yeah.
Anyway, and, and this is not to alarm people, it's to let you know, we need to find out how to, how to, how to plan, how to prevent, to set the tone for what's acceptable. And even if we had two officers dedicated to that party itself, I don't know if that would have been enough.
Well, but the issue isn't ordinances, because it sounds like they broke a lot of ordinances. The issue is, is more of a police issue.
But the congregating of a thousand people in a residential area with all the vehicles that were, we had no ordinances about the vehicles on the street. We had no ordinances for having, from having that many people. If we could have curbed some of the things that were more obvious, some of the other things wouldn't have taken place. So, and by the way, somebody suggested that since this guy is so good at posting parties, that we actually have him help us on our fall fest to get people to come out. I don't know.
Can you help, and I know this has been a long time and I haven't lived here all my life or anything, but isn't Gorman the only subdivision that currently has a homeowner association?
No.
Which is the one that does?
Sutman Vaughn, I believe both had homeowners associations. I believe Country Hills also does. Herby Meadows has a homeowners association. Our subdivision doesn't, yours doesn't.
Call that stuff.
I'm not sure what the bylaws call for, because the board is elected by the homeowners. I'm not sure what the bylaws call for.
But you remember that too, Rick, who would have come in and homeowners home?
For which one? For, for, yeah. There's, I'm not sure what it called for.
Yeah, their covenants, their covenant there, I believe, more has to do with the requirement to, let's say if you have a, an unattached garage or secondary building that has to match the decor of...
We're not responsible for, for enforcing their covenant citywide.
And our police can't do anything about it if there's violation in there. So I can't imagine Kevin and Molly being able to do much of anything about the local ordinance other than...
I would think the, what we want to be thinking about then is, is an ordinance that would have something to do with the public gathering without permission.
And, a simple, simple thing, I mean, because if Carl Ewan had noticed the situation, he would have been equally as, as frustrated, because if there had been a call for a fire or ambulance or something like that, they couldn't have gotten in there. So we can remedy some of that by adhering to what's commonly implemented here is, I mean, on, on other smaller subdivisions, and that would be no parking in cul-de-sacs, no parking on either the east or the north side of the street or something like that. You can implement where you require that parking has to be, you know, certain requirements. Now, is that going to bother some, some folks? Yeah. But, you know, it's, it's either that or you have, and if they, frankly, if they hadn't had that many people walking like they do, they would have passed bronze. It's going to charge you rather.
So I would just like to bring up, this is not something that we even need to be talking about now, knowing. Thank you for bringing help, but I think we really should...
Yeah, yeah.
Move on.
Thank you. All right. Church's report, do you have anything?
I just have one out of the board. I know it's not on those, Meyer, but we just got a, if the board recalls, we put a bid in for fifty-two thirty-four West Court Street. The heirs live down in Salem, which I guess is past St. Louis. They accepted the contract price with one, strike that, with two conditions. We buy it in as-is condition, which we're in the modus operandi, so that should not be an issue. The other issue, they asked us to pay for closing costs. Closing costs on this, thirty thousand dollars, I'd, I'd say two to twenty-five hundred, two thousand and twenty-five hundred. And that's, on a deal like this, it's not unusual. So, if it's okay with the board, we can have the mayor execute that. We've already authorized him, but I just want the board to know that they are asking an as-is deal. So we buy it as-is, obviously, and that, paying closing costs. So your contract price rather than thirty would be roughly, I'd say, thirty-two thousand five hundred.
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't believe so. Sir, as long as the board knows what we're doing, we've already authorized the mayor, this is a counter offer, we're increasing the price by roughly twenty-five hundred and no, no guarantees or warranties or representations.
So they just want it up, so they just want to split the money even?
Pardon me?
There's two, yeah.
More like it. But they're, the attorney's real cooperative, you tell them in Salem, he's not going to do order title, war order title. Anticipate a closing within thirty, thirty-five days.
Just get consensus on that to, as an addendum to the previous authorization. So, want to do a roll call on the consensus of that number?
Sure.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gracie?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
I don't think we have anything on our new business that hasn't been addressed. Open the public non-agenda items. No takers. I believe we have need to go into executive session.
Yes.
And as pertaining to matters of litigation or personnel. I don't entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So, who, Tiger?
Holston, erase it. Time's now eight oh four, roll call.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Gracie?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
I don't know that we're going to have any actual action that needs to be taken, so...